Good evening. This is a meeting in the Hampton Board of Selectmen, the Hampton Board of Health, being held in the Townhouse Auditorium on September 30th, 2024. This meeting is being conducted in person and remotely using video conferencing technology. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance, certified by the United States of America, Engineering Public, where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, free, liberty, justice for all. Thank you. Is anyone recording, recording the meeting rather than, Kristen from the Wolverhampton Hampton Times is recording, ready? Good evening, Kristen. First item we have on our agenda is the minutes for September 16th, 2024. We had an appointment to the Conservation Commission. We had a appointment to a call for a visionary firefighter. We're just giving out jobs here. It's a, we had a review of the TWB lease. We talked about the special town meeting warrant. They had a free cash update. We talked briefly about some capital projects, the fire station extension, and some, issued some food permits. That's about it.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Health IMA.
Hi.
What's up?
Good to be back.
We have Finn McCool here. Finn McCool.
So, before tonight is an updated version of the IMA that we've been working on for a while now. It's actually very much updated, changed a bit. I was ready to present the original document to you all beginning of June, and then the state wanted another look at it. They took a look, they recommended some, some changes. Went through, made everything the state recommended so that we're in compliance to receive continual funding. So, in front of you, there's the updated document. Really just spells out what this collaborative is. It's, it's a shared services between the town of Long Meadow, Wolverhampton, and Munson, where we provide all of your health department needs and wants. And as of right now, it's funded completely through, well, most of the way through by the state, through the Public Health Excellence Grant. So that includes paying for the salaries and indirect costs, for the most part, of the staff, which is myself, the director, health inspector, a public health nurse, and a public health coordinator. Long Meadow is the lead community. The next part in there kind of just spells out, I guess the most important thing is the, this advisory board, which we didn't really have in there before to this extent. It's just another oversight of the shared services, regular meetings, to make sure that we're in compliance, we're fulfilling our duties to you all. And if there needs to be any changes, or, you know, if there's collaborative-wide agreement that a regulation or something like that wants to be adopted, you can do it through that as well. So really, it's the original, just updated with the advisory board, and then cutting out a lot of the, I guess you could call fat in there, that was in there before. We kind of were going over and over that for the past couple of years, and then went through so many different attorneys that I think stuff just kept getting added in and taken out, and it kind of become, became a jumbled mess. So, we really cut it way down, and just spelled out exactly what the services are supposed to entail.
One question I would have, we talked about in here, there's a three-year grant. Well, we're already into that grant.
Yeah.
I mean, so, and I believe we're up until the third year, because we've had, so what's the plan going forward, and how's that reflect on the IMA?
Yeah, so, it was originally three years. They renewed our contract. I'm not sure if you have it in front of you now, but I, I did send in a contract late this afternoon, but we got renewed for another three years, which is 1.5, close to 1.5 million.
But we saw a shortfall before, and there wasn't an increase.
Right.
Do you anticipate that we're, first off, in the current fiscal year, do you believe we're all set?
1.5. This current fiscal year, there, I don't, I don't have all the numbers ready for you tonight, but I will have them hopefully this month, so that I can start, you know, being prepared. But it's, looks like it won't be like it was last year, which is good news, but it would still be some.
Is there potential for a shortfall?
Yeah.
But not to, one year was because of the, the wage, basically, survey you didn't want metal.
Yeah, it's really the same reason that it was so wrong, was those indirect costs added up for the force, for employees. That being said, staffing did change a little bit. We lost staff, happy report. We got a new staff member, a couple months in now. But yeah, with, with that, some of those indirects have changed a little bit, but it's ideally going to be less than it was this past year.
We do have an amount appropriated under that. The question is, and I think it was a little higher than what I think we have.
I think it was 25,000 or something, right?
So, would we have enough to cover what you anticipate for a shortfall? I don't know if we needed a warrant article, or we just say, look, we'll go to reserve if we're a couple thousand short when May comes around.
We'll wait and see.
Yeah, like I said, I should have some more concrete numbers for you shortly. I just don't have them just yet with the new staff member coming on, and so we cut it early into the, into the year.
But then future years?
Future years, the state has promised funding through 2033, but they, the good news is they've extended it, because it was, actually, it was a one-year contract each year, and they were renewing it. So this is the first time they renewed, and they changed it to three years. So, I mean, we are funded through the next three years at the, at the new base level funding.
But the base, does the base keep pace with, I mean, you're going up four, minimum four percent a year. So the new base, great for year one, no good for two and three?
Right. As far as I know, it's that, that base funding.
No escalator?
No escalator. Like I mentioned, you know, between years one and two, two and three, I was able to get an additional supplement from the state for that grant, that really helped bring down that, that first, that second year, sorry, shortfall. So, I'm always on the lookout for additional funding for our opportunities to make sure that we can, you know, afford to keep doing this. And the idea is, over all these years, that we slowly start building up and being ready for when there is still grant funding left, that we can be able to keep funding totally the services that.
It seems to be working well.
Right.
I think it's been great, so.
I think it's a compliment to the staff and the leadership of Finn. I agree with your point about the advisory board, et cetera. So you would be looking for a recommendation from each town's Board of Health for basically representative to that?
Exactly, yeah.
Okay. When do you anticipate, like, forming that, if you will, your first meeting?
Ideally, I have this new IMA signed off this, in October. As soon as that's done, it's, we're gonna jump right into it, get, get a start.
Okay. Put that on the agenda for some time, appoint somebody officially to.
Are we voting on this tonight?
I don't see why not.
So the other two towns still have to look at it, and there might be some changes?
Long Meadow hasn't reviewed it yet?
I don't anticipate changes at this point. One town already did sign off on it, so I, I got approval from our town council, which is also, sorry, Long Meadows Town Council, which is also Wolverhampton and Munson's. So Munson signed off on it next week, I'm going to Wolverhampton, and then following me to Long Meadow for the final, hope to be successful somehow, but if you need more time.
I guess technically, there's got a couple weeks to go, we could actually bounce this off of Rose and bring it up next week, don't we?
Yeah, okay.
All right.
Rose needs the money.
Well, that's very kind of you.
All right, we're gonna send us over to Rose to take a look at it. We'll put it on the agenda for next week.
Yep. You'll hear back next month.
See what you did there.
Thanks, man. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the closing of the special town meeting warrant, closing warrant. So we've eliminated.
It'll be out before 11:00, my gosh.
We've, we've removed the fiber optic.
Yeah.
We've removed the Rockin Dundee placeholder. We removed the North Road purchase article.
Two of those.
Removed two of those, and we removed the Green Meadows Capital placeholder, because we have.
Correct. Greg, the, I know you talked about having a committee meeting, and to talk about how the effect would be of the company that's talking about putting an upgrade in town. There's not even, you know, due two minutes on that, how it would affect the committee, or we're not at that place yet?
I think the committee's gonna go a different route.
Okay.
So, there may be more of a public announcement, rather than, rather than wasting time at the town meeting.
Okay.
And so that leaves us with a decision on Article 19, a draft Article 18 amending the zoning map. Before we begin that discussion, I guess there'll be a discussion about that. Be a discussion about that. In a previous meeting, I abstained from voting on anything that has to do with that article, because of where I lived. I've checked with the State Ethics Commission, and I've got an opinion from them that I can vote on it for, first of all, I don't live close enough, I'm not an exact butter, and secondly of all, there's so little known about what would happen there, that there's no way that anyone can make a reasonable determination if there's any positive or negative financial, you know, effect on me. And that was the ruling, and I filed a disclosure today. And I didn't have to, but I did today. So I'll be voting on it, so we do. And these are signatures you have here, is that, is that the deal?
Yes. If I could address the board.
Yes.
So, again, that's strategy. So, Red Horse, Department of Red Horse is the applicant. We, sorry. We have submitted an application. We believe that under Chapter 48, Section 5, once it's been referred by the select board to the planning board, the planning board has closed that public hearing that is required by Operation 48, Chapter 48, Section 5, to go before town meeting. We submitted our position on that directly through the town administrator, through the town council. It's come to our attention that there's a position that signatures are required, and there was some potential conflict between Chapter 48, Section 5, and Chapter 39, Section 10. An abundance of caution collected and submitted this evening to the select board, under signatures, requesting that the application of the Department of Red Horse be put on the town board. Again, we believe that's, that's not necessary, because it's required under Chapter 48.
Let me interrupt right there. It's not required under Chapter 48. Chapter 48 does not say that. Chapter 48 doesn't even mention a town, a warrant. But Chapter 48 says, as you well know, is that once a hearing is held, the, the planning board has 21 days to make a decision. They can make a recommendation, no recommendation, or the thing, but it doesn't say it has to go to the town meeting. As a matter of fact, it says it doesn't have to go to a town meeting for six months, and if it doesn't do that, it has to have another hearing. So I would respectfully say that's not, there's no case law, there's no statute that says that.
There's a case that we submitted.
Yeah, nobody didn't say that, you know. It didn't, it didn't go to that point about if a hearing is held, it must go to the town meeting. So, I, I would say that that's not the case. As far as the signatures, let me give a little bit of history here. On October 26th, you came in, and you asked us to, you gave your proposal, and you asked us to put it on the town meeting warrant. At that time, at the same time, you told us that you had already met, talked to the planning board, and had scheduled a hearing. As you know, the selectmen are supposed to send it to the planning board, but we, we let that go. We sent it to them, because you, the hearing was scheduled the 25th of September, and we complied with their request to get it over to the 28th, so they can have a 14-day notice to hold their hearing, which we did. They held their hearing, even though they had 65 days to hold the hearing. The consequence of the hearing is they didn't have enough information, they couldn't fulfill their mandate that they have on their website, which says is to review, to review and make decisions based on the, what, of the effect it would have on the town. So they had made no decision. Now you're coming in at well past the 11th hour, as a matter of fact, 15 minutes before we closed the motion, with signatures that aren't certified, that need to be certified. So basically, what you're asking us is to keep the warrant open for a week or so, which compresses the time for everyone else. I just don't get it. What's, what's the rush? Are you trying to avoid the master plan that may say something in it? Is there, I just don't get it. I mean, and we're talking about putting a, moving a storage shed in, in rezoning 300 acres of land, of residential land. You know, have you ever been to the Vatican? The Vatican's 121 acres. If you took the Rose Bowl, and the University of Michigan Stadium, and the Vatican, you stood in equal 300 acres. So this is a big piece of business for the town, and we're rushing it through, and I don't think it's, I don't think it's beneficial to Red Horse, and I don't think it's beneficial to the town to do that. So if I were to cast a vote tonight, I would remove that from the warrant, and close the warrant.
In response, respectfully, some of the findings you mentioned that the planning board found, I was at the meeting, I didn't hear them make those findings.
They made no findings.
Right, but you were talking about that it didn't allow them to satisfy.
Well, their, their mandate is, the primary responsibility is to review the resources and needs of the town with a focus on conditions affecting the public welfare and safety of the town. It was clear by the planning board members that they did not have the time or the information regarding the request to rezone the 300 acres of the, you know, to golf regulations to fill their mandate. So they adjourned the meeting without making a decision. And now you're saying, now you're saying, you're saying two things. Number one, that we're required to put it on a town meeting warrant, which no one agrees with. Our town council doesn't, and our town administrator doesn't. And, or you've presented signatures with 15 minutes before we closed the warrant, that need to be certified, that aren't certified. So we're asking, you're asking, essentially asking us to keep the town, the warrant open, compress the time for our staff members, so that you could move forward with the project that you want. And, you know, I told you before that everyone's treated the same. Back in 2023, a selectman came before us with the same situation. He wanted to put, he wore an article on a thing, he didn't have the signatures, and at the same, and at the same time, he only needed 10 signatures, he had the signatures, they weren't certified, and I voted no, because the one was closed. The board voted to allow it to keep the warrant open, which is their prerogative, and it went on the ballot. But, you know, if tonight, I would vote to close the warrant and remove that, so I'm just, that's my position.
I want to be clear for the record, a former selectman.
Former selectman, former selectman.
I'm looking at Craig, Craig's looking at me like.
If I could, Mr. Chairman, what we did is exact, I believe exactly what I had at the first meeting indicated that we were trying to do so.
That you, first meeting, you, you indicated you would prefer not to do that, which is fine, and you did.
But I did nothing other than what I said.
Right, no, but my point is, here we are, the day of the closing, you had 20, you had at least a month to do that, and here we are, you know, 15 minutes to go, and you've got them, but they're not certified. So now you're asking us to keep the warrant open, have the town clerk, you know, certify them as quickly as they can, there's other registrar voters, and, and that some other, and put it on the warrant, you know. I understand, if you have 100 certified signatures, we're compelled to put it on the warrant. But we're not compelled to keep the warrant open, because someone comes in with 15 minutes to go.
And the planning board meeting was late last week, which is part of.
I understand, you know, the planning board meeting could have been, planning board meeting could have been held the night of town meeting if they wanted to. Yes?
So, Mr. Chair, you bring up some good points, and the last, the 11th hour thing is a bit disturbing, but we're not posting for at least another week. We could, and we've done this before, we could offer the signatures for validation.
Well, they have to.
And if they come back, we can open and close the warrant, because we're not posting, we're just closing the warrant.
Yeah.
Next, we can say, we've got a report back from the board registrars, town clerk, whoever it is, that only 97 could be sworn to. Craig makes a motion, I motion to remove Article 19, I second it, and we go forward from there.
Can we motion to close the warrant pending certification of the signatures? Or does it have to be?
Well, I think we'd want to formally, I think, right now, it's technically on there, so we close the warrant. If we hear back that, hey, they didn't pass, we open next week and pull it off, before we post it.
Regardless of how I feel, you know, the 11th hour thing and like that, just reading Chapter 39, Section 10, I mean, they submitted 100 signatures before the close of the warrant.
Doesn't say that.
It says they must, it does if you read further. It says they must submit 100 signatures to the board of selectmen, who shall, at that point, check forthwith to certify the, with the board of registrars.
Yeah.
So, now that we have the signatures, which are submitted before the close of the warrant.
And my point is, they had a month to do it, and here they are, 15 minutes before the close of the warrant, asking us to keep the warrant open, which means.
I don't disagree with you. I, I think, you know, it could have been timed better, but.
Yeah, they could have.
If I could adjust the timing, please, because we did start collecting these signatures.
Yeah, and you started collecting electronically, you need to win signatures.
We had, based on dialogue with council, we were in Fort, and some lack of clarity on the process, we came to believe, based on conversations with council of the town, that, that the petition process was not the proper process, and to focus on 48. Apparently, that is not the position being taken now. It is what it is. We've, we've proceeded under both statutes, and believe that we've satisfied both statutes, Chapter 48 and Chapter 10, sorry, Chapter 31. And I apologize for the timing, it was, it's a compressed period. Answered question as to why, it's a seasonal business, and the off-season is the appropriate time for construction, that's why we're pressing.
Brian, you have an opinion? Brian?
Yeah.
Do you have an opinion?
Specifically what?
What do you, well, I mean, you're a town minister, you have a law background, it's just like, do you think the course of action, like I presented the board, look, let's stay there. If we hear back from the town clerk, they don't pass, we open next week and take it off.
I think that's, I think that's legal, yes.
And it gets prudent to cover our base just either way.
So they've gone through the 48, Section 5 process, right? They submitted zoning petition to the board, it was referred to the planning board as required by 48, Section 5. Planning board held a public hearing, and elected to let the 21 days run out. So they've satisfied that portion of 48, Section 5, for zoning limits. Now, the question before the board is whether it should be put on this warrant. And if the board decides that it does not want to put on this warrant, then there's a process in 39, Section 10, which, which allows an individual to collect 100 signatures of registered voters in town, to compel the board to put the article on the town meeting warrant.
When not to town meeting warrant, it's closed.
It doesn't, I don't, I don't see any language that talks about.
It doesn't say.
About, about the timing in 39, Section 10.
Oh, really? So, almost compelled to reopen, basically? And they were ambiguous about it?
I don't think so. If you look at most towns, they say if you don't do it on time.
But the MGL a little ambiguous on it, it doesn't say no or yea. If it's closed, it doesn't mention the closed word.
No, because it gives, because it gives the, as you know, 39, 10 gives the board of selectmen, as you recognize as well, sole authority to put, let's say, put on the warrant, unless people get petitions and, and all that stuff. Or they could, they could get 200 and have a special town meeting, Christmas Eve or something.
Like there's gonna be snow?
Yeah, there is no stipulation, just 100.
In terms of the petition supplemental process, it, the statute does say that it's submitted to the, the board of selectmen, and the board of selectmen refer to the board of registrars, who then.
That's all we have to do.
Who then would certify the signatures if there's 100. If there's not 100, then it's not a valid petition.
What if it takes, what if it takes them two weeks to certify it, because somebody's sick, or, that's what happened with Jim. Someone was sick, and they couldn't certify him, and.
At some point, there's.
Then now we're pressed up against, we have to post it 14 days before the town meeting, which would be the 15th, which is the day after Columbus Day, I believe.
So you're saying it's ambiguous that if the board of registrars certify the signatures and report it back to our board, it's ambiguous as to whether or not it would force us to reopen and put it in, because it doesn't really mention the closed part in the MGL.
It does not talk about the closing of the warrant.
Other towns have that stipulation, though. Look at other towns' websites.
But it's not.
You are, you are gonna be constrained on, on the back end from the.
From the, only the posting thing would like post it.
Special meeting.
The posting would be the posting time, the 14 days.
Right.
Or this, this board could vote to put it on, irrespective of the signatures, that's well within the 30.
Yes, but we could also, as I said, we could put it on, and with an eye towards, look, if we hear back from the board registrars, we then have a decision to say, look, we put it on in good faith that 100 certified people did it, and now we're gonna reopen and take it off, which we could do, because we're still well outside the 14-day posting, right, Brian? If we did this next week?
Yes.
So we could kick it and say, board registrars, we need an answer, which is typically the people downstairs doing the warrant.
Or we could close the warrant and take it off.
Okay. Right now, it's on the warrant.
A draft warrant.
Right. And I would say, I would close, I would close the warrant, I would direct the town administrator, get an answer from the board of registrars prior to the next select meeting, and let us analyze the result of what came back to us, and see what we want to do with that.
Can I ask a question for clarification?
Is there, is, is that a motion?
Well, I'm saying, the reason I would close the warrant is that we keep our option open with the certification.
I would close the warrant, I would take it off and close the warrant. I'll make a motion to close the warrant and take Article 19 off. Any second?
One second.
You can't do that.
You guys.
One second.
Maybe next, maybe next year.
All in favor?
My neighborhood is directly affected by what they're trying to do.
So, I'll second for discussion.
Okay, you're seconding it for discussion?
And the only reason I want to discuss is because I'm looking straight at the law that says they have to, ability to submit 100 signatures.
They do.
And, black and white, that's the only reason why I would say, leave it on pending the certification of the 100 signatures.
Right, leave our options open.
Regardless of how I feel about the situation, I just, letter of the law is what I'm reading right now.
But I would argue that the law is intended to have those signatures well before the town meeting warrant is closed, you know, or about to be closed.
I think that's open to interpretation, because it's ambiguous.
We're talking 15 minutes. And as you know, when Mr. Smith, who I respect dearly, did that, I voted no as well, so I'm trying to be consistent in my stance.
Right.
Is there any further discussion on my motion? All in favor of my motion? Aye. All opposed?
We're all in favor.
Is there another motion?
My motion to close the warrant as in the draft form it is right now, and I would also ask the chair to put the warrant on the agenda for next meeting, again, with a potential for opening, so we could, if some news comes to us, as part of the discussion for my. So, we could, if some news comes to us, as part of the discussion for my motion, basically, my motion would be that next week, if we get other news, we have the opportunity to address it.
I'll second that for discussion.
So, basically, the motion is close the warrant as presented in its draft form.
So, and your motion is to have the, the Article 19, the zone change on the warrant?
At this point, yeah.
At this point.
Yep.
And if signatures come in that are valid, to keep it on there.
At that point, yeah, I think, yeah, yeah. But I think if we heard, we would have another choice before us next week if we heard back from the registrars that say-
X, Y, and Z is no good.
Right, yeah, okay.
Before we vote on that, did we set the time? Because I'm hearing from people, at the time, at 6:30 might be a little tricky to get to. And I'm wondering if we want to reconsider 7 o'clock.
Now that you've stripped out six motions.
Yeah.
I, I really like the 6:30 thing, just because I thought, you know, especially since we have a warrant that doesn't have-
No, if we, no, if we, no, if we close though, then it's 6:30.
Let me, let me, if this was the annual town meeting, and we're going to the consent thing, because we're talking about streamlining the first 20 minutes on or so like that, I'd be okay with that. But the special town meeting, none of those ones at the beginning are one-minute articles. I think, you know, especially when we talk about the changes to the appointed elected positions, things like that, we're looking at five, 10 minutes each. You know, I don't want to be there until 10 o'clock, and I've been a time before.
I agree. I've heard from some parents that are concerned about making it there for the start of the meeting.
Do you think the, we talked about this before, would the babysitting help them?
I think that would be tremendous step forward that we should definitely look into, yeah.
Okay.
Maybe open the gym up, allow, allow-
Childcare or something, maybe park, if they want to run a couple of programs or something.
Absolutely.
Okay.
I think-
Get Dan out there signing the kids up at the same time, right?
Yeah, there you go.
Two birds. Balance the budget.
Okay, can we have a, we have a motion in a second.
I thought, I thought, quickly, though, that's a week, because we had already voted the date and time of the town meeting before.
Technically, we haven't closed, so we could set that right now.
We haven't posted yet.
Yeah.
Just telling you the word on the screen from-
Let's, let's put that in advance, and let's task our department to getting the childcare thing looked at this week.
Okay.
Because, again, that's something that could be modified to test our time.
Yeah, we could change that next week, too.
Yeah, all right. Thanks for bringing it up, though. I think we talked about it, we really didn't put the impetus on the childcare part.
Correct.
Okay.
All right. Where were we?
I dozed off. Your motion, was it, repeat?
My motion was to accept the draft warrant and close the warrant as drafted by the town administrator.
Contingent upon receiving-
Well, and then implore the chair to keep it on the agenda for next week with a anticipating reply to the town administrator from the Board of Registrars. So, we make sure it's on the agenda for next week.
Second, okay.
Right.
Do we not discuss it again?
No.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
All.
Thank you, thank you very much. So, we're going to send these to the registrar, the registrar for certification.
Want to run downstairs? She's probably still-
And, we'll see what happens.
Yeah, basically.
See you next week. All right.
Quick straw poll. How does everyone feel about 6:30 versus 7:00?
I don't care, I'm retired, so I'm good with it.
I'm tired, I care.
I'm retired.
What do you think? No?
Easy for us, 6:00.
6:30 is probably better, I would think, yeah.
What's this about babysitting?
Well, we want more families to come to town meeting, more of the young, you know, to decide, and if they have childcare there, like a program in the gym or something, there's a better chance that we'll get a better group.
Then you have to go 6:30 because a lot of the kids go to bed early.
Right, that's what I said.
Hey, some of us adults go to bed early, too.
But they got to put them in baths and everything.
I would push back on that, though, because a lot of the parents I've talked to within the school said it's tough getting out, eating dinner, and getting kids out the door for 6:30. That's 7 o'clock is, even though it's a half an hour, it's easier for them to get unwound from work, school, and get out the door.
I'm a parent, and I have a small child at home, and I know that I get him in bed at a certain time, and there's a routine. And if you go to 7:00, then the meeting's 8:00, then it's now, it's too late.
Yeah, I mean, we're all parents, so, yeah.
It's always going to be some, not going to be, we're looking for, we want more people to come to town meeting. And what's, you're not seeing a lot of young people at town meeting, we think that's why.
I mean, Wilbraham does it on Saturday.
Yeah, right, and we talked about that, too. That was a straw poll, we thank you. It was a gift on the way out, so thank you for participating.
Thank you. Hampton, Wilbur, Hampton Regional School District, letter.
Yes, sir.
Yep.
They want, they want, what do they want?
They want a rep.
Oh, well, we're sending that, this is, we're sending a letter.
This is that one, okay.
Tried to capture what the board had talked about at the meeting in response to the changes to the police amendment that we had sent to district. We were looking to strike the 3rd, 4th, and 5th, or as clauses, which talked about.
This is-
Letters that went back and forth.
This is well drafted, I'm sure it's like the sixth draft you did that took out some of the thing like, are you out of your mind?
I did pick out parts of it, yeah.
Yeah, okay, I think this summarizes. Basically, your part number three is the biggest part.
Right.
You know, what you talked about is not acceptable. We cannot have it open that you might take the school back, because that just constrains us so badly. So, I mean, the other two parts, I like the fact that one, number one, why are you bringing that up? It's like, the building was built in 67, thank you, so what?
You want to bring up Agent Heston, we've got a few things we could say.
Move on.
Yeah.
So, I endorse this letter, just, I think it's-
All right, we're good with this?
Yep.
Do we need to sign, or can you use something like that? This is Hampton Board of Selectmen.
I contend if you find it.
I would just change the back signature and just say, Don, that's board chair for the Hampton Board of Selectmen, basically.
All right, I'll sign it tomorrow, I'm not tomorrow, so.
Motion to endorse the letter as drafted.
Aye, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
One of the interesting things we did find was a letter from the district to the Mass School Building Authority in 2018, saying that they were taking the building out of educational use, out of service.
In 2018.
Probably at that point, sure, yeah. There was so much going on.
Permits and licenses.
As you know, there's an event happening on October 5th. This is the Apple, the Apple Place would like to come to the Fall Fest and also the Night Out. So, it's a dual thing. Cleanup for a Cure.
That's the, that's the waste thing.
That's the Paddy Cakes.
What is Paddy Cakes? What's the menu?
John, I thought they're supposed to start bringing samples.
Really? You gotta talk to Jane, she got the samples, she just didn't drop them off.
What do they make?
Paddy Cakes, Don, Paddy Cakes. It's like a, there's a nursery rhyme or something.
Yeah, okay.
And the Salty Baker.
Ooh.
Also a cleanup for a cure, and that's the event at the Commercial Drive.
All right.
Okay. So, I'd ask for endorsement for Paddy Cakes, the Apple Place and Rice's Fruit Farm, they're co-owners now, and the Salty Baker.
Motion to approve as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Don, here's their phone number if you want to call later.
False test is at TWB, right?
Yeah, next weekend, or this weekend, I'm sure.
That's the 5th.
Ambulance Oversight Committee, potential appointment. Do we have ambulance oversight committee people? Can you come up here, please, so they can be heard?
Is there liquor license in there, John?
For the ambulance committee?
No, in there.
I know, yakity yak, yak, yak.
Liquor licenses in there, too.
Licenses in Don's folder that he would-
Oh, in Don's folder.
Don's folder.
Okay.
I just have food, Don's got the liquor.
All right. How may I help you?
Well, Diane would like to be on the ambulance committee, and she wrote a letter to the selectmen.
Okay.
I think it's a fine idea. We thought about it the night we counted ballots, and here we go.
So moved.
So, you were, you were talking about it while you were counting ballots?
Right.
I would assume that the count-
Accurate and complete.
Okay.
And it was.
Sorry.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye. Thank you for coming by.
Thank you.
That was it?
That was it.
On the crumple?
Congratulations, that was it, thank you, Diane.
What about the crumple?
By the way, I filed a disclosure for that, too.
Oh, okay.
Who that?
Okay, now, correspondence-
No, 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 you have liquor permits.
Oh, liquor permits.
They're in your folder.
Oh, they are.
Made a pot shot in this.
Okay, I have-
The old companies.
I have, I have liquor permits, one day, one day permit for the Cleanup for the Cure from the Mineral Hills Winery, and I also have a one-day liquor permit for the Cleanup- Cleanup for the Cure is going to be a pretty good event. From the Fieldcrest Brewing Company.
Yep. So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
That was Craig didn't ask for samples, no.
We're on the job right now.
All right. The letter, correspondence, letter from the Wilbraham Regional School District and from Nick Bro regarding a committee to select a candidate to fill-
I was surprised, I was surprised when you said it came from Nick.
Well, he's, I guess he's put together-
He CC'd on it, I know.
No, no, he sent them email today saying he's putting together a committee of 12.
Why is he putting it together? Why isn't the school?
No, Nick, Nick was asking for clarification.
Yeah, that's what I thought, yeah.
Oh, okay.
John's putting it together, yeah. So, this is pretty typical. I've served on the contract committee, Don, for the past two iterations for the town. When they do the contract for the, how many different, I think there's five different unions in the school district.
Probably more than that.
We split representation every time. Wilbraham sends a selectman, then Hampton, et cetera. So, I've done that. Don, you've done strategic planning for, it seems like, a lifetime.
Still on that.
Thank you. And I would like to see Craig do this.
Someone with a kid in the school system.
Our school system, not Brian, I'm saying.
Oh.
Yeah. I think, Craig, I don't think, you know, they're talking 12 people, I don't think it's going to be a huge amount of time. They're going to probably get a firm to bring some candidates, look them over and-
I think the way, the way it worked the last time with the superintendent, we had nine on the committee, and it was very pretty good. They had the, they had a consultant come in, narrowed it down, we interviewed the, you know-
Kind of like I with the TA, us with the TA, sure.
Sign me up.
Sign you up? Okay.
He just wants to ask about the stipend first.
Oh, there's stipends? Do they sample?
And motion to appoint Craig Rovist as the, whatever it is.
Liaison?
The, the Assistant Superintendent for Finance, Search Committee Representative.
Okay.
Do I get a second?
No, second.
All second.
All in favor?
Aye.
One abstention.
Kidding.
Selectmen's-
Just for the one, don't make a-
Selectmen's reports.
So, going forward on the building committee, looking forward to a presentation at the Fall Fest, and, again, just appreciative, the chair mentioned, hopefully the number's going to change. I mean, we saw a nice drop in the interest rate, and maybe that'll bring the cost of materials down, which will help. And, again, I think just everybody with their feedback has been very helpful to the committee. So, looking forward to that.
John just mentioned Fall Fest, that's coming this weekend, Saturday, TWB, Trunk or Treat, 12 to 2. We're still looking for trunks for people to display and give out candy. There is prizes for first, second, and third place for best trunk, so there's some incentive there. Fiber optic committee, I mentioned last week, meant, last week, to talk about the futures of the fiber optic program at Hampton. We learned that Spectrum is going to be coming in within the next month or so to install a full fiber hybrid system throughout town. So, it kind of puts a pause on whatever plans the fiber optic committee had, so they've decided to stop and wait and see how this new venture from Spectrum plans out. But regardless of the fact, we're getting fiber in town, so that's a plus.
One quick thing, back to my highway department, as you know, they repaved Allen Street, think they did a nice job, quicker, very quick. They're going to be starting, as you may have seen on social media, starting Mill Road. They won't be doing lines until both roads are done, but the company comes in at one time and puts the lines down, and then they go back and do the backfilling, the driveway stuff. They're hoping to get most of Oak Knoll, except Don's part, done.
And mine.
No, he's, he's getting gold, that's why, it's a special order.
I'm getting those nice pavements.
All the stones, like Philadelphia.
Right.
Yeah, really. That maybe by the end there, it may not. It's all about, they are so booked out at the asphalt plants, but the money is there. If it doesn't happen before the end of the year, it happens next year. Nothing new on the tractor yet, they're still manufacturing a little tiny parts, and hopefully it'll be here sometime next year. But the money, the cost didn't go up, the money's appropriated, so that didn't affect us at all.
And, and on the cannon, we should bring up the cannon. What do you have to report on the cannon?
It's over there.
Right, cannon's over there? No, one of the highway, one of our highway employees was at a museum, and he showed a picture of the cannon, and they got very excited about it. They want to come up and take a look at it, and they even want it, they said, can we, do we have it? So, we'll see what happens.
Oh, I praise it, nice. I did mention to Mark that, and he unfortunately didn't catch it in time, but he did say, the board did say, any expense, we're going to get it, bill it against the 150 account. Well, he didn't, but we may look at, a chance to reimburse that.
Okay. Town administrators report.
EV charges at the senior center, still waiting on national grid to make the connection. I meant to mention this last time, the 16 Summers Road lawsuit. The plaintiff filed a motion for reconsideration, which, and that was denied by the court. So that's back to, no decision at this point. So we'll see what happens with that. Cable license, speaking of Spectrum, the attorney owes us some.
Can we, can we?
Yep.
Can we go back to the, and on the other case, we filed a motion for clarification and the attorney for the applicant filed a motion in opposition for clarification.
Yeah, a motion in partial opposition to our request for clarification.
What's a partial opposition?
So they wanted, I don't want to get too down in the weeds, but they, they're actually asking for a different decision.
Now they changed it, right?
So they're waiting for a hearing date. Their request was that the decision, that the judge required the issue into the permit subject to the 21 conditions previously approved, whereas the judge ordered the planning board to issue the special permit to include any reasonable conditions, including but not limited to the 21 conditions.
So their position is that no matter who's on the board, just issue the permit. The part where we're looking for clarification about the personnel.
The procedural part, yeah.
Yeah, but now they want, but the judge originally said.
And any reasonable.
And any reasonable, any other reasonable conditions the board can. Now they've changed it to say, we just want the 21 conditions.
That's why lawyers make money, right?
Which is a different judge. That's not a clarification, that's a, that's something you would appeal.
That is an appeal, is it?
Yeah. So I don't think that'll be successful.
Okay.
So cable license with, with charter. We should expect a, a second draft back from the attorney probably within a week. And then we can start negotiations with that. There was a lingering unemployment claim that was appealed. And that has been denied by the Department of Unemployment Assistance in the town's favor, so that's good. MVP kickoff meeting for the, the upcoming grant, I have that scheduled for this upcoming Thursday. We're going to have the open enrollment for life insurance, we have a meeting October 8th with the open enrollment to follow show either after. That's about it.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
This charging station you got is a senior center. Is the town paying for people to use that?
No, no, they pay us. They pay us.
Because the reason I brought this up is because I was watching the news in North Hampton was actually paying the people, or paying that bill for the citizens, and now they're discontinuing it.
Right.
I'm watching the news, I says, boy, I sure hope Hampton is.
No, 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 we're charging, we're charging you.
You got that EV card, you find your own way of paying.
It just, now it's convenient for you, I mean, it's close.
Don't, don't be bringing your toaster down there, because it's not that kind of machine.
I love my senior center.
I do, I don't know why they got eight of them, though.
It's four.
Four.
Two doubles.
Oh, two doubles.
But it's, keep in mind type 3, and my son lives on Weir Road.
Oh, he's from Ross from there.
They have a IONIC, something like that. So they do the house charging, but with a type 3, you're looking at 15, 20 minutes tops and they can go to Boston. So you're going to find people in town like, oh, I don't have to plug in town. The cost is going to be the same as if they went to Holyoke Mall, what they have somewhere.
The library, the library.
So what do they do, use a credit card to pay for it?
That's it, or they're, if you have a different car, the app, I guess, charges.
Tesla automatic charge, I think.
I mean, there's going to be convenience for people that live in town that say, oh, my gosh, I was going to Boston, like, it didn't plug, overcharge overnight, but I can go there for 15 minutes and I can head there. Because the type 3 is very attractive.
And once they get on the turnpike and the car dies because of traffic.
That's a great question, do they have charging stations on the pipes? They do, huh?
Does it cost to fill a car with electricity?
That's a great question.
Well, the average.
I got a Ford, I don't know.
The average.
Depending on the kilowatt.
The average kilowatt hour, the average kilowatt hour charge for charging in Massachusetts is 52 cents kilowatt hour. Some, some, like the ones in the long, East Long Meadow, charge by the hour, by the hour. They try, I think, a buck 50 an hour or something like that, because it takes a long time to charge. We'll probably charge by the kilowatt hour because it'll only take 20 minutes, so however many you use it, you know.
You fill up, you fill it up at one of these charging stations or do you just hold it up enough to get to a?
Well, I think with the fast charge, people are going to want that fill up, yeah.
It depends on travel, too. A lot of people, when they plan their trips, will plan it around these, this one's considered a supercharger. So they'll plan their trip around where they can go in. And if it's a long trip, the, the GPS calculates how long they have to stay at each station for. So if it's a supercharger, say, okay, when they get to the next one, you need to stay here for 20 minutes and then you go on to the next one down the road.
We will make some money, I mean, there's a cost, we have to pay back for electricity. But there is, you know, say it costs us 35 cents a kilowatt hour, we're going to charge 50. So we'll make a little something.
So putting those in, that was a grant or?
Yes, it cost the town nothing for any of that work.
Nothing for all that work.
Can I bring my computer and charge it?
You would have charged it.
If you want to see a couple of smoke.
Well, there's a very large charging station over by the big Y in Palmer.
Yeah.
If you're headed to the Mass Pike.
Yeah, yeah, they're, they're in that back plaza.
They're open now because I've seen cars in there.